Good evening. This, the 105th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Jacob Simpson of the Salem Lutheran Church. After the invocation, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. So, in lieu of tonight's prayer, I invite you to take a moment, close your eyes, center yourselves. We consider all this city is going through, the good, the not-so-good, and I'm not just talking about the Ravens record. This, we sung this song this morning, and it really spoke to me, and I'd like to share the lyrics with you as we pray. "And in despair I bow my head, there is no peace on earth, I said. For hate is strong and mocks the song of peace on earth, goodwill to men. Then pealed the bells more loud and deep, God is not dead, nor doth he sleep. The wrong shall fail, the right prevail, with peace on earth, goodwill to men." Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for this evening. Thank you for every person who's in this room, our leaders, our citizens, reporters, everybody who is fighting to make a difference for this city. We ask that you bless our council, Lord, bless our mayor, bless all who gather, give them the courage and the wisdom to honor this city and all the people who live in it. Help us to continue on as a city in unity, in love, in peace, and in justice. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge, you stated Pastor, our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor. Thank you Pastor Simpson for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Scott, Henry Middleton, Holton Welch, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. There's no showcase tonight. It is the Council Custom Generalized Invocation Act for motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Costello, second by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general of the proceedings for the December 7th City Council meeting is on the council members' desks.
They're motion to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Council Vice President Rossinger. All those in favor adopting the journal say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry the journal is adopted. Executive appointments.
EA 15-0304, John D. Barber Jr., member Wage Commission.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 15-0305, Kevin Loeb, member Community Relations Commission, 5th District.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 15-0306, Adotee Richard Gandhi-Akiwi, member Community Relations Commission, 2nd District.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
Ordinance 15-0603, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Mayor's Office of Human Services, $100,000. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $100,000 to the Mayor's Office of Human Service, Service 356, to provide funding to support the Journey Home Director position, which was previously privately funded and provided for special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Budget Appropriation Committee.
Ordinance 15-0604, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Mayor's Office of Human Services, $1,165,000. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $1,165,000 to the Mayor's Office of Human Services, Service 895, to provide funding to maintain the Baltimore Station overflow shelter for 125 men and to establish low-barrier shelter where individuals can receive services while being with their parents and pets and while working on the health challenges and providing for special effective date. Sponsored City Council President.
With their partners and pets.
While being with their partners and pets and while working on their health challenges and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0605, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, $54,000. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $54,000 to the Health Department, Service 716, to provide funding to support half the cost for a full-time veterinarian position at Barks and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0606, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Office of Civil Rights, $186,000. $186,248. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $186,248 to the Office of Civil Rights, Service 848, to provide funding for four contractual positions within the Police Community Relations that will allow the civilian review board to better serve the public and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0607, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, miscellaneous general expenses, $500,000. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $500,000 to the miscellaneous general expenses, Service 122, to provide funding for settlement of residents' claims as a result of the collapse of the portion of East 26th Street in April 2014 and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0608, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Planning, $500,000. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $500,000 to Department of Planning, Service 761, to provide funding for community greening projects in targeted neighborhoods throughout the city and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Budget Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0609, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Police Department, $346,923. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $346,923 to the Police Department, Service 642, to provide funding for 10 new contractual Police Department crime lab positions in fiscal year 2016 and for new equipment and supplies needed for evidence processing and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0610, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Police Department, $8,400,000. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $8,400,000 to the Police Department, Service 621, to provide funding for the settlement approved by the Board of Estimates on September 9th, 2015, for the family of Freddie Gray, for outside legal expenses for the Freddie Gray, for the Freddie Gray case, and for ongoing Department of Justice review of the Police Department and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0611, admission and amusement tax, arena artistic performance exemption. Ordinance for the purpose of exempting certain artistic performances from the admissions and amusement tax, defining certain terms and generally relating to the admissions and amusement tax. Sponsored President Young, Henry Middleton, Costello, Kraft, Clark, Riceinger.
Okay, I want to explain this bill. This bill will put the Baltimore Arena on the same playing ground as the Hippodrome and the other art districts that's in the downtown area, and this would allow us to bring in more and bigger concerts to the arena. So, I appreciate my co-sponsors. Please note that Councilwoman Holton, Councilman Kern, and Councilman Mosby, Councilman Scott as co-sponsor, Councilman Welch. Thank you. This has been assigned Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0612, zoning condition, conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two-family dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, 2229 Calo Avenue. Ordinance for the purpose of committing subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 2229 Calo Avenue as outlined and read on the company plaque. Sponsored Mosby.
This has been assigned to Land Use and Transportation Committee. There are no resolutions to be introduced. The Consent Council, you can find it in Section 8 at the back of the agenda, is their motion to approve the Consent Council. Motion by Council Vice President Rossinger, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor approving the Consent Council say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this Council is approved. Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I make a motion to read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by, by Henry, Councilman Henry? Okay, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of the meeting, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Health Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0584, psychoactive substances.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health Committee met last week on City Council Bill 15-584 entitled Psychoactive Substances. The Committee voted the bill favorable with amendments. We heard from the Health Department, and in particular, we heard from Jack Lee Clayton, the Chief Medical Officer of the Baltimore City Health Department, who testified that recent statistics from the city's emergency department stating that there had been a marked exponential, potentially exponential increase in the use of synthetic drugs. Dr. Clayton stated that there is unfortunately no way to test for synthetic drugs, and so first responders must rely on clinical presentation. In the case of K2 and other synthetic drugs, doctors have only a few hours to diagnose the issue before it becomes dire. The Police Department is aboard with this. There are some amendments on my colleague's desk. The amendments, and we heard from Victor Turtavala, the Assistant City Solicitor, proposed two amendments that are before the council and are on our desk. First, he proposed striking two lines because he provided the Health Commissioner too much discretionary authority. And second, Mr. Val proposed adding language to another clause to strengthen its authority in sanctioning individuals that have violated the bill. There was no opposition at the hearing, and hopefully that we can get this passed in third reading in January to make these substances removed from sale in our city. With that, I move the amendments favorably.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving the amendments say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the amendments adopted, Chair recognized, Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move City Council Bill 15-584 favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the bill moves to third reading. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0590, demolition, et cetera, of city structures.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this bill was before the council on Monday night. We referred it back to the committee. We had a hearing on it yesterday. We rescinded the prior amendments. We heard new amendments, and we have adopted those new amendments. They are on the members' desk. I move those amendments at this time.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving the amendments say aye. All opposed, nay. This motion is approved. Amendments adopted, Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reading. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 12-0062, plant unit development designation, Hollibird Manor condominiums.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, this is a PUD. I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving the finding of facts say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendment.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving amendments say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the amendments adopted, Chair recognized, Councilman Rossinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 15-0553, plant unit development designation, 4701 O'Donnell Street.
Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, this is also a PUD. I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendment.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving the amendments say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the amendments adopted, Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 15-0554, plant unit development, Brewers Hill.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, this is also another PUD. I move the findings of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving the finding of facts say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
This bill has amendments, the amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving the amendments say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the amendments adopted, Chair recognized, Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 15-0571, rezoning 3232, 3234, and 32 through 36 through 3244, Eastern Avenue.
Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, for rezoning, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving the finding of facts say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, there's no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 15-0571, rezoning 502 Albemarle Street and a portion of Duker Alley.
Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, this is a rezoning, I move the finding of facts.
Ho, ho. He said 571, it should be 573. 573.
City Council Bill 15-0573, rezoning 502 Albemarle Street and a portion of Duker Alley.
Chair recognized, Vice President Rossinger.
Okay, this is a rezoning, Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor moving the finding of facts say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0250-R, Baltimore City Police Academy at Coppin State University.
Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee held a hearing on Resolution 150250 on Tuesday. It was a discussion about investigating the possibility of moving the Baltimore City Police Academy to Coppin State University. For further comment, I'd like to defer to Councilman Mosby to sponsor the resolution.
Chair recognized, Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Vice J. It was a very informative hearing. At the hearing, we had representatives from the Police Department as well as Coppin State University with the idea of studying this conceptual idea to, again, move the training facility from Northern Parkway and Park Heights to Coppin State University. I want to stress to my colleagues that at this point, it's just a conceptual idea to provide us with the opportunity of looking at the roadmap on seeing the cost benefits as well as the soft benefits as it relates to police and community relations, providing college credits for our police officers, as well as utilizing the state-of-the-art facilities there at the Bishop L. Robinson School of Criminal Justice at Coppin State University. The hearing ended with the plan, a roadmap, for the Police Department to lay out the parameters that they would want to receive from Coppin State University, at which point Coppin State would go back and look at from a cost analysis perspective exactly how much they expected the cost and the operational procedures that would set in place for, to allow it on the campus, and at which time we'll come back and then reevaluate it. I know some council members have stressed the idea of wanting to know the specifics associated with this particular plan. At this time, there are no specifics. Again, I would like to stress that it is just a conceptual idea. I think it's an idea that we should evaluate, and we could become a national leader as it relates to urban education of our police officers in a state-of-the-art environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, we recommend the resolution favorably.
Second by Councilman Mosby, all those in favor of adopting this resolution say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 15-0264-R, restoring 911 as an efficient and responsive public safety partner upon which Baltimore city callers can confidently rely for help.
Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, Public Safety Committee held a hearing on Resolution 150264 on Tuesday night as well. This resolution called to restore 911 as an efficient and responsive public safety partner upon which Baltimore city, Baltimore city callers can confidently rely. We heard a bunch about the process and the progress that has been made since then. There is an amendment on our council members' desk that's very technical in nature. I move the amendment.
Second by Councilman Mosby, all those in favor of adopting the amendment say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried.
Mr. President, for further comment, I'd like to defer to Councilman Mosby.
Chair recognized, Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, as stand again, this was a very educational hearing. I don't take the credit for this bill solely. It was co-sponsored, lead co-sponsored by Mary Pat Clark, and the one unique thing about this is I was hearing the same complaints in West Baltimore that Mary Pat Clark was hearing in North Baltimore, and in talking with Mary Pat, we decided to put the bill forward. The exciting thing about the bill was it was a resolution. However, the administration thought that it was important enough for them to make immediate changes prior to us even having the hearing. The hearing was very informative. Again, we had Chief Teresa Everett from the Fire Department, we had Quentin Herbert from the Labor Commission, we had Jerome Mellon, Director of Moet, we had Drew Vetter from Baltimore Police Department, and we also had Andrew Jaffe, Director of Information Technology of BP, of BPD, to talk about the things that have been put in place from an operational perspective, as well as the augmentation of the actual operators and dispatchers. So, it was a very favorable hearing, very informative hearing, and we look for continued improvement and next best steps as it relates to ensuring that the first line of communication for public safety is a very efficient, efficient way in the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
President, I move the resolution favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Mosby, all those in favor adopting this resolution say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this resolution is adopted. Third reading to be held on meeting.
City Council Bill 13-0299, zoning condition, conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, Varens's, 2642 Mick Eldree Street.
Third reading for final passage.
City Council Bill 15-0467, Departments of Public Works, Transportation and General Services, conformant code references to charter allocations, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0563, sale of property, a portion of the former bed of Cardiff Avenue, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0564, waterfront management district, extension of district, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0564, City Council Bill 15-0565, personal property tax credits, food desert incentive areas, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0579, fire and police employees, retirement systems, regular interest, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0586, University of Maryland Baltimore BioPark Development District, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0588, University of Maryland Baltimore BioPark Special Taxing District, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 15-0591, solid waste management plan for 2013 through 2022 amendments, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved. Clearing of the bill status, the list of bills, to be clear, can be found on page 11 of the agenda. Please inform the council president's office in writing of bills that you would like removed from this list by Friday, January 8th, 2016. Committee announcements. Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation Finance, Economic Development, we have four hearings we wish to announce. The first one is Legislative Oversight 15-0137. That will be a brief committee hearing on the current status of city audits, and for the purpose of calling our representatives from the Department of Audits, Department of Finance, to brief the committee on the current status of city audits, we will also be bringing before the committee third-party auditors of any audits that have been accepted by the Board of Estimates by this particular date. So, that will be on Wednesday, January 13, 5:00 p.m., here in chambers. Nexus Council Bill 15-0587, which we will hear January 21st, 2016, 10:00 a.m. here in chambers. That's the University of Maryland BioPark Development Bond Ordinance, it's the TIF ordinance, bond ordinance, that we will hear on that particular date. Bill number 15-0271, January 21st, 10:30 a.m., here in chambers, informational hearing on making microfinance work for Baltimore. And same day, January 21st, 2016, Bill 15-0585 at 11:00 a.m., we will hear the CHAP bill on tax credit historic properties. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, committee. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Budget Appropriations Committee, I need to move for suspension of rules 10-3 to announce several hearings.
Second, Councilman Scott, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is carried, Councilwoman, you may carry on.
Thank you. Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-603, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Mayor's Office of Human Services, $100,000, on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, 4:00 p.m., here in council chambers. Mr. President, I need to move for suspension of rules 10-3.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay.
Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-604 on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, 4:00 p.m., here in council chambers, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Mayor's Office of Human Services, $1,165,000. Move for suspension of rules 10-3.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you. Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-605 on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, 4:00 p.m., here in council chambers, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, $54,000. A move for suspension of rule 10-3.
Second by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-606 on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, 4:00 p.m., here in council chambers, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Office of Civil Rights, $186,248. Move for suspension of rule 10-3.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is carried, Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-0607 on Tuesday, January 12th, 4:00 p.m., here in council chambers, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, miscellaneous general expenses, $500,000. Move for suspension of rules 10-3.
Second by Councilman Mosby, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is carried, Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-608 on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, 4:00 p.m., here in council chambers, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Planning, $500,000. Move for suspension of rule 10-3.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-609 on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, 4:00 p.m., here in council chambers, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Police Department, $346,923. Move for suspension of 10-3.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
The Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-610 on Tuesday, January 12, 2016, 4 p.m., here in council chambers. Supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Police Department, $8,400,000. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hear Resolution 12-8.
Are you suspending rules? Or no?
No, I don't need to suspend rules. Will hear Resolution Number 12-8R on Tuesday, January 26, 2016, 4 o'clock p.m., here in council chambers for quarterly budget briefing, where we will get a status from the Department of Finance, Bureau of Budget and Management Research on the first quarter of 2016 and the FY '16 mid-year review, keeping in mind that the mid-year may not be completed, but we are requesting an update as to where we are at that time.
Thank you.
That concludes my hearing announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Councilman Welsh. Any more committee hearings on that side? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive appointments will hold a hearing on Wednesday, January 27, 2015, at 10 a.m. in council chambers to hear Council Bill 15-0304, John D. Barber Jr. as a member of the Wage Commission, and Council Bill 15-0305, Kevin Loeb as a member of the Community Relations Commission, Council Bill 15-0306, Adotee Richard Gandhi Akwai as a member of the Community Relations Commission. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 15-0576 on Wednesday, January 6, 2016, at 1 p.m. in the council chambers. The purpose is to require a public hearing by the Planning Commission on site-specific matters, notice and hearing on applications for final administrative decisions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Committee announcement. Regular announcements. First, I want to welcome Councilwoman Holton back. She's been out due to surgery, and we want to let you know that we did miss you, and we welcome you back. Also, we had Councilman Kern, who was out sick, and we're glad to see you back. I know the ribs are kind of hurting, but we're glad to see you back. And we had Toys for Tots yesterday, and boy, did we have a great time. I want to thank all my council colleagues that came. I want to thank you for the toys and, hey, look, on Christmas Day, when those kids get those toys, and they were quality toys. They were toys that we would buy for our own kids. I know they're going to be very, very happy on Christmas Day.